This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council held on Tuesday, October 17, 2023, commencing at 7:00 p.m. I will call roll, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Here.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Carson. He'll be here soon, I'm sure. Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Kahn.
Here.
And Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is items from the audience. Speakers have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And according to the council's rules of procedure, testimony on quasi-judicial matters must be presented during the public hearing and cannot be presented during items from the audience. Testimony regarding the Redmond Flex project, therefore, will not be accepted tonight during items of the audience. The public hearing is scheduled to be held on November 21. And as a reminder, RCW 42.17A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot measures or candidates, and no one has signed up to speak remotely this evening. So we have three individuals this evening. Oh, and Councilmember Carson has joined us. We have David Morton, then David Haynes, and then Linda Seltzer.
I'm David Morton. I'm going to eliminate part of my talk. Redmond should know what future contamination threats to the aquifer will result from new development on its aquifer. Projects that are intended to be built within CARA II only have to comply with two prohibited land uses and activities at their site: permanent de-watering and reclaimed or recycled water use. The Redmond 2050 Supplemental Draft Environmental Impact Statement suggests that Redmond can improve its CARA regulations by following recommendations in Ecology's Critical Aquifer Recharge Area's guidance. The guidance says that many jurisdictions require businesses that handle chemicals to submit a critical material inventory so that the jurisdictions know what chemicals are on-site. The fire department requires similar reporting. These efforts may be coordinated. The city of Redmond Fire Code is a great example. The section of Redmond's Fire Code 15620, Wellhead Protection Ordinance Coordination, was recently amended and codified in August 2023. It says that the fire department conducts reviews and inspections to verify that storage, handling, use, and operations involving hazardous materials comply with adopted codes. However, Redmond's CARA regulations for CARA II prohibit only permanent de-watering and recycled water use. Redmond has a pollution prevention assistance agreement with the State Department of Ecology. Per the agreement, Redmond conducts site visits to businesses that may potentially pollute groundwater within its CARAs to conduct risk-based assessments. Redmond could require that businesses wanting to locate on Redmond's CARAs first be proactively assessed by this program for risk of groundwater pollution. Redmond's fire department is competent in identifying flammable, pyrophoric, unstable reactive, and radioactive materials. In addition, pollution prevention assistance specialists could help prospective businesses find, resolve, and prevent potential pollution issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Haynes, and then Linda Seltzer.
Thank you. I just want to address what happened last week because I think the council needs to have more than two public comments a month. And my friends would be here, but they found out what happened about the cop trying to sneak up on me, so they didn't want to come here and complain about a problem at 152nd and 2600 Crossing. The street light was malfunctioned about a week and a half ago where they purposely programmed it to change every 60 seconds. And it's chirping so loud that all of these residents on the corner of the building are going nuts about it. It's waking them up. It's echoing in their apartment. Either you've got to dial it down, or you've got to have a better program that, when you walk up and you're trying to cross, it automatically kicks to the pedestrian side. But you haven't got there yet. So by the time you get there, the time's about to run out, and you push the button, and it doesn't give you an extra 10 seconds. And I think it's because the construction company bought a cheaper version of a so-called technologically advanced street light, and they're trying to accommodate people's concerns about being more pedestrian-friendly by programming it to kick on for the pedestrian every 60 seconds, all night. The red light to the green light, all night, every 60 seconds. It's the most outrageous malfunction, and my neighbors are flipping out about it. But because they're not a citizen, they don't want to come down here and have the cops drag them out because they're complaining about something, or get in trouble, or whatever it is that they have a concern about. And it needs to be addressed. Because I tried to, like, I'm walking down the sidewalk today to the grocery store, and the foreman and the crew showed up after like, two weeks of not being around, and they're there for like, an hour and a half, two hours, doing virtually nothing. And so I asked him, I said, "You got a problem with the malfunctioning light? Can you reprogram it?" And they said, "That's like, the electrician's problem." I was like, "What about the ramp that's throwing people into the road and is causing people to like, trip their, and like, twist their ankle right where the concrete is flawed design?" So, the foreman says, he lights up a cigarette and blows it in my face and says, "I don't design it, I just build it." I was like, "Well, why'd you build it unsafe?" So, I was like, "Wait, you're the same guy who caused my bike to be broken a while back because you left some steel plates in the middle of the road and you claimed you didn't have to put any ramps on there? And then you sarcastically let the other two steel plates in the middle of the lane of the road with a sarcastic speed bump that was never properly put in?" And so I cussed them a little bit. He immediately calls the cops and says, "Help, somebody's threatening me." So I go to the grocery store. On the way back, I see him BSing the second Public Works Department official, who seems like he's got a drinking problem. And I say, "Hey, you guys need to stay out of the bar, or maybe you need to be fired." And so they immediately call the cops again. And now, because we have two people calling the cops, evidently you're automatically a criminal. And he took a video of me and he downloaded it, so now most likely the cops got me in their computer system as if I'm the number-one criminal enemy of the town. And I was exercising my free speech on the sidewalk. And I don't understand why some construction worker or anybody is smoking cigarettes or anything on the sidewalk. So I think we need, like, aside from addressing the 152nd and ordinance, you're not allowed to smoke anything on the sidewalk, and if it's illicit, you need to be trespassed.
Mr. Haynes, can you tell me again, so you said, there's a light that's having an issue. You said 152nd, and what was the cross street? Because we'll have-
2600 Crossing, right where the Overlake Park and Ride turns.
3600?
Yeah, maybe put the whole, like, speaker on the other side of the road, further away, and dial it down, but then reprogram it so when people come up there to use it, you know it'll trigger. But don't trigger it every minute. And then, don't allow it to not trigger when you get up there for an extra 10 seconds, making you still wait. It's flawed design. It needs to be dealt with.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. We'll have someone in our Public Works check it out. Thank you. Next, we have Linda Seltzer.
I support equity funding, but last time I commented on the fatality and harm caused by separating the population into quote-unquote "white" versus quote-unquote "bi-poc" for the purpose of social services and rent control in King County. But now that's becoming a paradigm proposed for Redmond 2050. And when race is the only category, we don't consider others such as stroke victims or medical necessity. So I support equity funding, but the division into white versus bi-poc is really not acceptable, and it's very artificial. Now Redmond is creating a quote-unquote "comprehensive language plan centering true identities," end quote. Last time I described how, okay, the rental assistance, centering one category underfunds another and the fatal consequences of that. What is a quote-unquote "true identity"? Who has a true identity, and who has a false identity? Is this about prosecuting credit card theft? It doesn't sound like it. In the academic discipline of cultural studies, an individual has a combination of identities: ethnicity, profession, talent, spirituality, health or disability, politics, creativity, and more. But in Orwellian fashion, the city, and Redmond 2050, is going to define quote-unquote "true identity" and center it, and even to create a glossary to ensure common meaning, quote-unquote glossary to, ensuring common meaning. Heaven forbid that we have the intellectual freedom to think this out for ourselves and define our own identities. Semantics dictated by a city planning group is a PR activity and is not a cosmetic and is not a substitute for real progressive results, such as preserving fertile land or passing a state income tax or meaningful rent control.
And there are no, no one has signed up to speak remotely, and items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 And with that, we have two things. One is an ordinance to read into the record. Ordinance number 3131, an ordinance of the city of Redmond, Washington, amending sections 5.04.070 and 5.04.080 of the Redmond Municipal Code, increasing the business license fee as required by RCW 35.90, municipal business licensing effective date. And with the passage of the consent agenda, we have two new Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commissioners. Clint Smith will be sworn in tonight, and Praveen Ratchakula will be sworn in at a later time. So Clint, if you would like to come up to the front, and we'll have the clerks swear you in.
I'll redo the oath, and then you'll say, "I do, I will." If you agree, then you'll sign this when you're done. Right hand. Do you, Clint Smith, having been duly appointed to the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission of the city of Redmond, Washington, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as prescribed by law and to the best of your ability, and that you will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Redmond, the laws and the Constitution of the state of Washington and the United States of America?
Do and I will.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item of business is a staff report for the Redmond Flex Master Plan Development Agreement and Site Plan Entitlement. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will be introducing this item.
Good evening, council members. Carol Helen, Planning and Community Development Director, it's good to see you this evening. Tonight's staff report is for the Redmond Flex Project, which is a development of 5.82-acre site in southeast Redmond. Council was last briefed on this project at the October 3 Committee of the Whole Meeting. This is a Type 5 quasi-judicial consolidated review permit and is subject to the appearance of fairness doctrine. For that reason, I've asked Jim Haney to describe what the council can expect when we hold the public hearing on November 21.
Thank you, Director Helen, and thank you, Mayor. According to the Redmond zoning code, the Redmond Flex Master Plan Development Agreement and Site Plan Entitlement are quasi-judicial matters for the council's consideration. And because the council doesn't often do quasi-judicial matters, I thought I would take a moment to let you know what to expect at the outset of the public hearing from the city attorney and what you'll be asked to do at the outset. The council's role in a quasi-judicial matter is, as the name implies, to act as an impartial judge would. You're going to receive evidence at the public hearing, and you're going to have to make your decision on whether or not to approve the application based on that evidence that you receive. You have to make it based on the evidence and not based on any information that you might receive outside of the public hearing, and also not based upon any bias or appearance of bias that you may have relating to the application, one way or another. Actual bias is not the reason for disqualifying, the sole reason for disqualifying a council member. Because in quasi-judicial matters, the appearance of fairness doctrine also applies. And what the appearance of fairness doctrine means is that your proceedings have to be not only fair in fact, they have to appear to be fair to a reasonable person of knowing what you know about your background and your relationship to the application. The question that is asked in quasi-judicial proceedings is whether a reasonable person, knowing all about your backgrounds and your connections to the project, would think that you might not be able to be fair in the proceedings. So when this matter comes before the council for a public hearing on November 21, the first item of business before any testimony is taken will be to explore that issue with the council and to find out whether there are any biases or any things about your background that need to be disclosed. Here's how it'll work. At the outset of the hearing, I will ask a series of questions of the mayor and council as a group. There'll be things like, "Do you have any financial interest in the project?" or "Any ownership interest in the property?" "Do you know any of the proponents or opponents that will be testifying?" "Do you live near the project, and will the project impact you in any way, in terms of traffic, in terms of noise, but in a way that is different from the way the general public will be impacted?" "Have you talked to any of your constituents regarding this project, and what was the substance of those communications?" So I'll be asking questions like that. And to the extent that any of the council members answer yes to any of my questions that you do, you do live near the project, you do have a financial interest, then I'll ask you some additional questions so that you can disclose that interest and place it on the record. Once all of the disclosures have been made, then it's time for any proponent or opponent of the project to challenge any of the council members that they believe may not be fair. This is like what happens when a jury is seated in court. If you've ever been on jury duty, you know when the jury is seated there, there are a certain number of challenges that both sides can make to jurors and ask that jurors be excused for those reasons. And the judge rules on whether those challenges are valid, and if a, if a, there are challenges that are called peremptory challenges, where you can just challenge somebody and they're automatically off the jury. But there are other challenges where you have to show cause. And with council proceedings, you always have to show cause. You have to show that the council member might not be fair. But if someone does come up and challenge, and it is a legitimate challenge, then the council members or the mayor, who has those kinds of biases or facts about their involvement that need to be disclosed, may have to recuse themselves from the proceedings. What happens if people do come up and make challenges is usually I, and for those of you who've been on the council for a long time, we may have had a quasi-judicial matter before you, and so you may remember this, but usually I will then say, "This appears to be a legitimate challenge, council member, so you should probably recuse yourself." And if you do recuse yourself, then you need to leave the room during the matter. On the other hand, if the challenge is not a legitimate challenge under the appearance of fairness doctrine, then you can remain seated, and I will advise you as to whether that is the case or not. If there are no challenges, then all council members and the mayor are free to sit on the proceeding, because any challenge that could have been made based on the disclosures that you make and that are not made at the outset of the hearing is conclusively deemed waived. So you are then able to sit, and there is no further challenges that can be made. So that's what'll happen on November 21. I wanted to lay this out tonight so you wouldn't be surprised when, at the outset of the proceedings, I start asking questions, so you can be prepared and you can think about whether there are things about your background that you need to disclose. One thing that Director Helen, I'm sure, has told you via email before, has warned you about ex parte communications, and that's simply communications that take place outside of the hearing. And again, if you think about it as a judge, if you were in court as a litigant, and you knew that the judge had been talking to the other side outside of the proceedings, you would not feel comfortable having that judge decide your case. So that's why we have discussions of ex parte contacts. Now, one thing about ex parte contacts, which the appearance of fairness doctrine allows, is that if you place them all on the record, the substance of the communications on the record, and you still believe that you can sit as a member of the council and be unbiased and fair, you are allowed to sit. Because once the communications are placed on the record, then anyone who wishes to come up during the public hearing can address those. They will have an opportunity to address those comments. But I always recommend that rather than, rather than having to go through all of that and having people rebut all of the things that you've heard at the grocery store or whatever else when people have come up to you, it is better not to have those ex parte contacts at all. So I do caution you to not have those if it is possible. But we will go through those at the November 21 meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time, but just wanted, again, to let you know what is going to happen, so you're not surprised when it comes up.
Are there any questions for Mr. Haney? Council Vice President.
Well, thank you for that really helpful summary and reminder, since it has been a little while since we've done one of these. One quick question. If the entire council has been sent something from a constituent or someone in the community via email, is that something that is already disclosed via the clerk, or is that something that would need to be disclosed?
We probably should disclose it. I'm not sure that everything that has been communicated to you would be something that the clerk would be placing in the hearing record. And that's what we need to be sure about, is that whatever has been communicated does get placed on the record so that people can come up and address it during the hearing. So I would suggest that you do disclose. And if, one thing I didn't mention, but I will mention, if all of the council members have the same issue, then that is deemed to be not legally sufficient to challenge you, because we do need a quorum of the council in order to decide anything. So if all of you are tainted, all of you get to sit. So.
Any other questions for Mr. Haney? Yes, Councilmember Anderson.
What's the best way we should be requesting information in advance? My question is specifically related to questions we may have during the hearing, or during the meeting, that a decision will be made whether or not that is expected after the public hearing?
Well, first of all, you should get all of the evidence that you want to get in the public hearing. So if you still have questions at the end of the public hearing, I would suggest continuing the public hearing to enable you to get the information and have it placed in the record. Second, communications with staff are not subject to the ex parte communications, because staff is neither a proponent nor an opponent of the project. They are simply here to advise you relating to the project.
Thank you. I think that's the main question, is we'll direct questions to staff in advance of that meeting, so that any questions get asked on the record.
Yes. If you do direct that to staff, then what we will make sure to have done is that Director Helen and the staff will make sure we place in the record that the question was asked, and here's what the answer is.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Haney. Director Helen.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Tonight, Principal Planner Tim McCarg is joining us online today, and he will be giving you an overview of the project, and will be seeking direction on whether to schedule a study session in addition to this staff report, or to move directly to the public hearing. Tim will also be collecting any questions council may have in preparation for the future study session or staff report, where we can provide you with answers. And we talked generically about providing feedback to staff. If you could direct questions and comments to me, I'll make sure that we do include those in the record appropriately. And with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Tim.
Thank you, Carol. Excuse me. I apologize for joining remotely tonight, but I have a touch of the COVID, so I thought it was better for everyone that I do it this way. I have a brief presentation here on Redmond Flex that I'd like to share with you, and if you can just confirm that you're able to see that, that would be helpful.
Yes, we can.
Thanks.
Can you change it to presentation mode?
Of course I can.
Thank you.
There we are. So, as indicated with that somewhat lengthy buildup, this is going to be a quasi-judicial public hearing on November 21. This is for the Redmond Flex Project. Just a quick background of why we're here tonight. The purpose is to provide you with an overview of this project and to confirm whether you would like to have a study session on this project a week from this time, on the 24th of October, and if you would like to have a study session if there is any specific information that either I or other staff members can prepare and present to you at the study session. So, the Redmond Flex Project, what is it? It is a new, approximately 135,000 square feet foot flex building. What a flex building is, is basically a combination of industrial and office space. This particular developer targets tech companies. So essentially, what this would do is construct that facility in this location in southeast Redmond. It is a 5.82-acre site, and this building would be located essentially centrally on that property. A little bit of background to this area, I'm going to change perspectives. In the previous slide, north was to the top of the slide. In this slide, it is on the left-hand side, going to the left. In 2008, a relatively large development was considered and approved by city council. That was called the Union Hill Corporate Campus. That was a master plan development agreement and short plat. The master plan and development agreement were valid for 20 years. That development agreement and master plan are still in effect. What you see on the slide before you is the short plat that resulted from that project. It created seven lots in this area. Union Hill here is on the left. Union Hill Road is on the left. You've got the Heidelberg gravel parcel, which is the largest parcel there on the top of the slide. You've got Costco self-storage facility, transportation facility, and then FedEx. All of those were developed on lots that were created as part of this corporate campus master plan. The sole remaining seventh lot is in the upper right-hand corner of this slide, Lot 7, and that is the site for this Redmond Flex Project. So essentially, everything around this has been built out, and this is the sole remaining site. That development agreement addressed a variety of different things that were to happen with this development. this development. Specifically, it called out a series of transportation improvements, as well as stormwater improvements that were to benefit and mitigate impacts for the seven lots created as part of that project. So essentially, all the mitigation for Lot 7, for the development of Lot 7, has already been taken care of and is in place as a result of that master plan for the corporate campus. A quick overview of the zoning and the neighborhood. The project here is highlighted in the darker color and indicated as the property here. To the north, again, you have the Heidelberg gravel property. To the west, you have the FedEx Development Distribution Center. To the east of the project is the Woodside Townhome Development that's currently under construction. And then to the south, you've got Southeast Redmond Park, which is currently undergoing a master plan process, and then existing single-family development in that R12 district. What I want to highlight on this slide, in addition to the zoning and the surrounding uses, is this hatched area. Under the Redmond zoning code, because of these adjacent different zoning districts, there is transitions that are required. The width of the transition, the performance standards within those transition zones, and buffer requirements are all established in the zoning code. So as you can see, the subject property here has the transition zones on the easterly property line and the majority of the southerly property line. Also, something to point out on this slide is that the parcel is split zoned. So the frontage along 188th here is zoned NC1, Neighborhood Commercial 1, and then the balance of the property is NDD2, Northwest Design District 2. So you've got different uses and different bulk standards that are allowed in the two different zones that are overlaid on the property. This is a quick site concept design plan, just to illustrate what is being proposed here, consistent with the slide previously, and the transition zones. As you can see, the easterly portion of the property and the southerly portion of the property, there are no active uses there. It's comprised of parking lots, circulation areas, as well as substantial landscape buffering to create transitions to the southeast Redmond Park to the south, and then to the townhome development that's under construction to the east. Some highlights of the site plan. The building is located, again, centrally. There's a truck loading area that comes off of northeast 70th. What you can see by these dotted lines here is that that actually, a portion of the second floor of the building cantilevers over and covers that truck loading area to minimize noise and visual impacts of that truck loading area. And then a major feature of the development, and the primary public face of the development, is along 188th, where you've got a lower-story element here in the NC1 Zone District, the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District. You've got the primary entry lobby for the facility, as well as a small retail use here. This large plaza feature is really a character-defining feature of the development. It allows for a food truck to be parked here. There's a plaza, there's soft-surface open green space in the north, and then to the south. And the hope here is that this will activate and bring something new to this neighborhood, both in terms of the retail commercial use, as well as the food truck and active open-space uses, and that can also activate and integrate with the southeast Redmond Park to the south. Just some finer-grain detail here regarding what's going on in that plaza and street frontage. To give some character here, you've got the soft surface here of lawn, you've got some soft-surface trails interspersed with plaza and a corner entry feature here. Then you've got some hardscapes features with some seating walls, picnic tables, the food truck space for parking, and then some entry features and other opportunities for outdoor seating here. This is to give an illustration of the type of landscaping that's proposed there. You've got a mix of kind of pollinator type of landscaping at the perimeter, and then more kind of urban, upper-story and mid- and lower-story features along the frontage and then to the south. And then the other image here is just to give a kind of an idea of the character of the furnishings and built environment features that would go in those hardscape areas, as well as some of the soft-surface areas. To give a character of some of the building design, what I'd like to do is just highlight the primary design features here, which is on the right-hand side of this slide. Essentially, flex-type space is typically fairly rectilinear and somewhat boxy due to the nature of the floor plans for these types of uses. They need to be large, they need to be open, and as the use indicates, they need to be relatively flexible. So given that, what the architect has chosen to do here is to try to break some of that down by adding this one-story element, which is the lobby and retail feature here, and then to offset that one-story mass and skew it relative to the primary building mass. And then over the truck-loading area, the second-story mass, this is actually, again, offset in angle, covering the truck entry parking, and this is a glass cube, and the balance of the facility, the balance of the flex space, is concrete tilt-up construction with this vertical banding that is added to try to break up the mass, add some color and pattern differentiation, and provide visual interest. So then, as you can see on the left-hand side of this slide, that is showing some perspectives. The top is showing the perspective from the pedestrian as you come into the facility, into the site from 188th. So you've got this offset one-story mass here with the retail use in the lobby, and then the flex space behind that. And then this is from essentially this perspective, the southeast perspective, looking back on the truck-loading area with this cantilever, glass cube mass, that is skewed and offset from the balance of the building to provide some visual interest, as well as mitigate the impacts of that truck-loading area. Here are some elevations, just to illustrate that. Again, you've got the primary construction type is tilt-up construction, which is these concrete panels. You've got some metal panel here that's providing some color and materiality differentiation here to break up the mass. The one-story element, that's the lobby, as well as the retail entry, framed by and highlighted by some fenestration here and additional variation in materials. And then this is the essentially east elevation, the rear elevation, truck-loading area, glass cube second floor, and then a secondary lobby entrance, and then the balance of tilt-up construction. North and south elevation, so this would be along 70th Street, this north elevation, so this would be the primary street facade there. Again, primary tilt-up construction, you're breaking up the mass at either ends with some additional variety in terms of fenestration and materiality. And then the south elevation, this is fronted by the parking lot. Southeast Redmond Park is to the south here. There is a substantial landscape buffer that will screen that parking and this building facade from the park. So with that overview of the project, just some quick highlights of what was done in terms of community outreach, involvement, engagement, and notification. Notification was sent out for the project. There were two neighborhood meetings that were held for this project back in 2002. The first neighborhood meeting did not garner any interest by the public or participation. At the second meeting, one member of the public did join and ask some questions. The nature of those questions were length of construction, which is anticipated to be approximately 18 months from construction initiation, sufficiency of employee parking that has been verified through a parking study, and how construction access would be managed, that would be managed off of 70th, with all staging to occur within the property boundaries. And then, that really concludes the presentation. Again, just to reiterate, there is a potential study session that we have scheduled for the 24th, a week from tonight. If you can please confirm whether you would like to hold that study session, and then if so, if you can identify additional information that you'd like staff to bring forward at the study session. And then, as we discussed, the quasi-judicial public hearing is scheduled for November 21st, and that will be noticed accordingly. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Questions from the council, and also we'll figure out if you would like a study session. So I see Council President Forsyth with her hand up.
Thank you. I see there's a considerable amount of thought given to public space and engaging the community, which I very much appreciate. The question arose for me, is there public access? Is there planned to be public access for restroom space if they are truly trying to engage the surrounding community?
Yeah, so a requirement for the food truck to be parked there is that it needs to have a restroom, so that will either need to be provided interior to the building or through some type of port-a-potty feature. So I'm not certain what the intent of the developer is, but I can certainly inquire as to how restroom facilities would be provided, whether those would be used in the lobby, or if there are restrooms associated with that commercial space, whether those would be available to the public, but I expect they would be.
Great, I appreciate that. And I will wait to listen to the rest of the conversation until I decide about a study session. Thanks.
Thank you. Other council questions? Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. So, Tim, so I wanted to know, so obviously, we didn't have much interest from the community, and I have a feeling that there would be more if, so I'm kind of curious about how that was communicated out. I think Woodbridge does have an HOA. Was, do you know if that was a channel that was used?
So, good question. You know, as you understand, obviously, you know, the Woodbridge project is under construction, and so the neighborhood meeting was noticed back in 2002, and at that time, I am not certain whether the Woodbridge HOA was up and functioning, and how that parcel had been subdivided at that point. But all property owners within 500 feet would have received written notice, both of the application, as well as of the neighborhood meetings. But again, because that's a relatively new neighborhood, and I don't think the residents have had a chance really to get their feet underneath them and understand what's going on in the neighborhood, I expect that's a real reason, as you indicated, why we didn't get a high level of participation at those neighborhood meetings.
Well, so actually, Woodbridge is the one that's been there for probably 15 years now.
Twenty.
Twenty, yeah, it's been there a while. Not the one that's under construction, but the one that's on the other side of the park property. Because I know a few folks in there, and I'm kind of surprised that there wasn't more participation. So, okay, I'm just curious if you knew kind of what methods they used to reach out.
Yes, I can double-check and find out, based upon the mailing list, whether the HOA was notified. But the way that we typically do notification as required by the code is to individual property owners within 500 feet. So, for example, if the HOA had some type of common area, where they will still list it as the owner of that property, we would have sent a notification to them if that property was within 500 feet.
Right.
But I can double-check the notice and confirm whether that actually went to the HOA, or whether just to individual property owners based on that 500-foot distance.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I have two questions or requests, and I apologize, I don't have this in my memory from reading through the memo. Could we get a list of the partners that are involved in the project, including the developers, as well as any subcontractors, especially since I work in public works, and I just am concerned about the quasi-judicial nature of this particular action? And then I have a general question about the site environment, and if there's been an environmental site assessment done that we could get a copy of. So I would love a study session if that was part of the conversation on the development.
I believe a Phase 1 environmental study was prepared and submitted.
Okay.
I'd need to confirm that, but we can certainly make that available, because I don't believe that that was included in the attachments that you received, so I can ensure that you received that.
Thank you. And I think one other question on the timing of this, this is probably for the planning staff, either maybe Director Helen can help with this, or a study session. I just would love to know a little bit of the difference between when this initial plot was approved and the changes that we've seen through the commitment and the commitments that we're making in the 2050 plan, since this seems to be one of those projects that is getting in right before the adoption of the new comprehensive plan. I'm really curious to see what kind of balance between the old and the new we might be able to get. Thank you.
Can you help me explain that? I'm not exactly sure I understand what you're asking for there.
It looks like Director Helen might have read my mind.
I think I can rephrase it. I think what Councilmember Anderson is asking is, this development is obviously moving forward under the existing code, and whether comprehensive plan changes would foreclose outcomes on this project that would have been different. And actually, I think I can answer that question right now for you, which is, remember, this area is identified as part of the southeast Redmond industrial area, so the type of development you're seeing on this parcel, given the size, is pretty consistent with what we're going to see likely in the future under the new comprehensive plan update.
Great. And I guess the clarification on, maybe what I'm looking for is some information on if we're going to be negotiating some of those public benefits that we've been discussing and thinking about, so those future-forward changes that we may be able to see. I understand the nature of this conversation is really, is this a go or no-go based on what we're presented? So I would really just be curious to see if there's any sort of wiggle room that we get, so that we get a little bit more public benefit out of the project.
So I can also answer that question, which is, right now, the project is under review. We're under an obligation to continue to review projects that we've started, and we're generally under timeline constraints. And as a result, we can't add to those requirements at this point with things that really aren't actually going to be in effect until the end of 2024. This project is, if memory serves me correctly, this developer would like to get started in spring of next year, so the time will have passed for us to make changes to this project.
Great. And I think the general feedback for that would be, if there are differences that we can be expecting to see of an older development versus a newer one, I think that would be really helpful, just for context, since we are having future conversations, and we're all getting really excited about, you know, affordable housing and those kind of things.
Sure. Would you mind if we brought that forward as an example in the context of Redmond 2050, when we talk more about southeast Redmond? Because it really is kind of beyond the scope of this project to start talking about regulations that could apply, and you might make the developers nervous.
I would not be, I would not mind at all. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Kritzer.
Could you share a little bit more about the type of uses of this structure that are envisioned?
Sure. So this particular developer, Avenue 55, specializes, the end user, the targeted end user is typically some type of technology company that has some type of manufacturing component with it. So that is intentionally what this company goes about designing. So the general use is classified as manufacturing and trade, but it allows for a broad range of things, including office, which in a tech environment, such as the target market, would be a lot of design function. And then there's also potentially a manufacturing function that goes along with that. So to the extent that items that are designed by the office function, it's integrated under one roof, so all of that is happening, as well as distribution. So it's intended for one company to be able to consolidate all of those types of operations under one roof.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to understand the multi-use factor. Is there any retail that would be included, or no? It's just...
So there is, as I indicated, it's split zone. So the frontage along 188th there is zoned Neighborhood Commercial, and so that's why they're putting that small retail commercial use, that one-story use there along that frontage. And that's really, you know, to... you know, to be honest, excuse me, with that and the food truck and the public plaza, it's really intended for that particular use to, to engage with the residential portion of this neighborhood, because there really isn't anything like that out there to speak of. And the idea behind kind of consolidating all of those things, integrating with the park, doing those outdoor features, is that it's highly unlikely that a retail business on its own would be able to survive in that location due to lack of visibility and the size of the space. And so trying to create some synergies with other uses, the food truck, things that might be happening at the park, engaging with passersby on 188th and 70th from the adjacent residential development, that's really the idea, to try to build more drive-by, walk-by traffic, and try to identify a user that would benefit from that, and be able to utilize those synergies.
Great. Thank you very much. And I would say I'm also interested in the environmental analysis that Councilmember Anderson requested, especially given its proximity to the Evans Creek area. One, one question I had, I was interested in the sustainable design piece, and especially the, the green roof. And I noted that it says that there are 12 bicycle parking spaces. Is that 12 bicycle parking space areas, or space for 12 bikes?
So there's, yeah, so there, the, the facility, because of the nature of the use, because it's manufacturing and wholesale trade, actually, the requirements for that, for bicycle parking are significantly lower than it would be if it was, for example, for some other type of commercial use that would drive higher bike commuting numbers, such as office, or such as retail. So the, the number of bike parking spaces that are required is driven by the nature of the use of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So I was, I noticed, when talking about the retail, it seems to me that also that the retail could be something like a cafe that would also serve the, the employees, potentially, of the facility. Do, do they have a, a rough estimate of how many could, could employees could be accommodated on the site?
The, the number of employees total for the site?
Yeah.
Is that the question?
Yeah, I'm just curious if they have some kind of ballpark estimate, given it's got these multiple, multiple uses. So the office and the, and the warehousing and the retail. It seems like.
So off the top, yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it just seems like it could be, you know, anywhere from 10 to 150, depending. I, I, you know, it's hard to, to kind of gauge in your mind what that kind of space looks like in terms of warehouse space, but.
Yeah. And so it's a good question. I would need to refer back to the, the traffic study. That would probably be the best source of data to identify the projected number of employees, because that's going to be how they're parking the site. What I will say is, it's probably closer to 100 employees than it is to 10. The, the reason is, is that there's, there's a significant variety of different components that go on within these types of facilities. There's a lot of areas of the building, for example, that are going to be more analogous on a square footage per employee basis to office. And then there's going to be some that is more for manufacturing, both, both design prototypes, as, as well as full-on manufacturing. And then there's going to be a portion of the building that is going to be dedicated to more of like a warehouse and distribution function. And so there's a range of different square foot utilization per employee for those different functions within the building. But I would expect, based upon the numbers of parking stalls, that there would be at least 100 employees that are part of this operation at full buildout.
Yeah, 240 is the, I just, I just saw that. So that, I think that kind of, I mean, it could be anywhere from, because, yeah, you might have some people coming to meet with you, and if you, if you had this space. And then, so a totally separate question, and I didn't see it anywhere in here, that it talks about routes for, especially for, for big rigs getting to the location. It does talk about egress, not directly from 188th, but the, the street that'll be constructed, which obviously, you know, I mean, to get to the back portion of the, of the lot, that's necessary unless you went through the parking lot. But my, my concern is the residential to the south, and that somehow there'd be some, I mean, it makes the most sense for, for any truck to come in from Union Hill, and then down 188th, and not come Redmond Way and 188th. So I'm just curious if, if that's specified anywhere in here.
Yeah. So I, I put the.
Right. Thank you.
Put, put the site plan back up just for, to be able to reference. So yes, you're correct, that because 188th is a higher, higher-volume street, we're not going to allow direct access off of 188th. So all access is going to have to be taken from Northeast 70th. And so what you see here is actually two entries and exits that are separated a great distance to avoid any type of conflicts there. So this entry, the westerly entry, is going to be primarily for customers and for employees to come into the front of the building and, and utilize the parking on the south of the building.
Right.
Easterly, the easterly entry is again for employees to park in the rear and on the south, but it is also the primary and exclusive entry for large trucks. And so trucks will be coming off of Northeast 70th, pulling into the facility. This area has been designed and engineered such that, so that all of those larger trucks, including an 18-wheeler, will be able to turn around and back into the truck-loading area here. So this allows for vehicle and truck maneuvering. And then they will pull out and exit via Northeast 70th, going to the west, and then onto 188th. So that has been included in the design. What I'd like to point out in relationship to that is a couple things relative to trying to mitigate the impacts of that truck-vehicle area on particularly residential uses to the east. So this is a substantial buffer area here that will both provide visual screening, as well as noise mitigation due to the density of the plantings. The other thing that is going to mitigate a lot of the noise associated with truck loading and unloading and maneuvering is the fact that a portion of the building here is cantilevered over the truck-loading area, which is going to buffer and muffle a lot of the sound associated with that. So the design of this has been intentionally done so that those operations of the, of the trucks, unloading and loading, as well as maneuvering, is not going to create either visual or acoustic impacts on those neighboring residential properties.
Right. So, so more, more of the concern I have is how they will get to the site from the freeway, for example. And, and I, and I, obviously, you know, egress to the site is one thing, but how they proceed through town to get to the site is another. And, and I don't know how prescriptive we either can be, or, I mean, to me, it makes a whole lot of sense to make it clear that, that there is really one truck route that serves this and serves it best. It's not because we want to limit their, their choices, it's because there are more pedestrians in, to the south, and it's, it's, it's just not as good a, a route to get to the site. So I'm, I'm curious if that's something that, that we could at least ask the developer if, if that's something they would agree to.
And I can certainly, you know, take a second look at the traffic study to see if, if truck operations are addressed in that traffic study, and if so, what they anticipate. What I will say is that, obviously, given the nature of, of the really large format operations in this area, both FedEx, the postal service, Costco, Heidelberg, I think there's, there's awareness and the utilization of truck traffic in this area that is fairly well-established. And so I would be surprised if this particular user wanted to deviate substantially from the existing truck access to this portion of the city.
Sure. Thank you. So, and then the last thing I had is, is there any plans to signalize the intersection at, if you put that back up, or I can get to.
Sure. Yes, sir.
What is the number, the, the street, 70th, is that, yeah, 70th?
70th, yes, that's right.
So out at 70th and 188th, is that planned to be signaledized, or, since it doesn't continue on to the other side, I don't know if there's a, if it, if it's a T, or if it's, if it's a cross, a crossroads. But will, will that be signaledized, or just a simple stop sign?
No, it will not. That's correct. It will be a stop-controlled intersection.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for the conversation and the overview. It's really difficult not to see this site sitting right next to a park that we have, are kicking off a big planning process for. And in the documentation, there, I saw, I saw a little bit of conflict. So I just want to check in on this, because I saw in the fancier proposal, you know, the one with the, the pictures and all of that from the developer, there was some reference to accommodations for being near the park and how they envisioned that. But then there was also a line somewhere in there about how the city has nothing, no plans to do anything with it, anyway. And that, that's just, you know, as we know now, not, not the case. So what can you tell us about the conversation, or the interplay of these, of these two parcels sitting next to each other?
That's a good question. To be honest, I, I think that, so, in fairness to the developer, this application was submitted in 2021. And, and at that time, when the initial application materials were, were produced and submitted, I'm not sure that city staff, at least planning staff, was aware of a potential master plan process for southeast Redmond Park. So I think part of it is just the fact that this application is several years old, and, and the application material is probably, the developer probably wasn't aware of that process, and the application materials weren't updated to reflect that. But to answer your question, it's, it's, it's somewhat of a difficult issue. The transition zone requirements that I touched on in the presentation, what they really want is a very solid buffer from this zone, not just this use, but this zone, to the adjacent park, which is zoned R12. It also wants that transition from this parcel to the NDD-1, lower-density zone, to the east. And so what the transition zone requirements are wanting are, number one, a, a very substantial, solid visual landscape screen between the parcels, anticipating what the potential range of uses are on the subject property based upon the zoning. So that's why you see really no significant connections to the park, because those transition zone requirements really don't want that. They really want a solid screen. And essentially, the idea there is to provide really a blank canvas for the master planning of the park, to anticipate a solid landscape stream that will be substantial within five to 10 years. And that will essentially form the northern boundary of that park, and buffer it from the adjacent parking lot and, and the use within the building. Now, that changes a little bit as you move on this parcel towards 188th, towards the west, because that portion of the property is zoned NC-1. Those transition zone requirements and substantial landscape buffer is not required. And so I think that's an opportunity there to potentially look at some type of linkage, whether that linkage is simply a sidewalk connection, whether it's less intense landscaping that can connect really from that portion of the park to the public plaza and open space and food truck area along the frontage of this project. That remains to be seen. But is, in terms of the master plan process, I think that it creates some pretty well-defined boundary conditions on this parcel that the master planners for the park can utilize and, and be aware of. So at a certain level, the known of what, what's going to be there gives the opportunity for those master planners to react and program and plan the park accordingly.
Certainly. So for, for us, the council, this, this one is first in line, and, and the connection between the two, we will see that again. That will circle back around. I, I really appreciate Councilmember Carson bringing up the concerns around community engagement. And I wonder, you know, we just had 100 or more community members at the southeast Redmond Neighborhood Park kickoff meeting. And I, I was there, and I know so many signed up to be on a listserv to learn more about, like, the park and the adjacent, or, excuse me, the park and the planning process. I do wonder if it's worth using that listserv to notice the hearing that is coming up. It is, many of those homes are beyond the 500 feet. That 500 feet, that's on my buck, my wish list for us to address at some point in the code. If you look at the, the inset here with the map, maybe the 500 feet would have captured a couple of residences on the corner there, but the overall users who are going to be going to the park, for instance, and overlooking this property, and knowing that there are going to be these buffer zones, I do really appreciate the foresight and the planning on that. But as a decision-maker, I would really love to hear from them. And so if it's possible to use that list for the purposes of noticing the hearing, I think that could be helpful to get us some feedback from the public.
Sure. I can certainly get that list and expand the notice. One thing that I do want to point out is, excuse me, the public hearing notice will be issued a minimum of 21 days prior to the November 21st public hearing. So that is our opportunity to, to send that out, and perhaps engage people that either missed it the first time or weren't aware of it. Though also, as part of, because this is a, a master plan, the special notification and signage provisions kick in for notification of this project. So again, with the public hearing, the large notice sign will be erected on the property with information about the hearing, how to participate, how to comment. And so hopefully, that large visual clue will perhaps even notify people who are, are beyond, beyond even the, the number of people who participated in the master plan process for the park, because that's really the intent, is anyone who's passing by can see that sign and be aware of what's going on, have the opportunity to participate if they choose.
I very much appreciate that, and know that the, the folks who recently demonstrated some engagement may be a little bit extra engaged, and I would just love to make sure that they feel included, and we have a chance to hear from them. Thank you again for the presentation. Very much appreciated.
Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome. And, you know, just, just for awareness, it, it's not uncommon that people don't necessarily engage in these neighborhood meetings on, on development-specific proposals. You know, we experience this a lot, even with infill type of subdivisions. We just don't get a large level of participation, unfortunately, for most of, of those development projects. So if you have a, a list of neighbors who are engaged and interested in what's going on in the park, and by extension to the property to the north, we'd be happy to, to get that information out to them.
Any other questions this evening? I will share that it appears that Councilwood is interested in having a study session, since we have quite a few questions, especially environmental ones. So unless I see something to the contrary, I would say that they definitely want a study session. So if we could, if we have more questions, and we can maybe ask them, and then we can make a list and, and respond to them at the study session, that would be great. Councilmember Carson, did you have another question?
I just had one quick one, which is, so from the, from the renderings, it doesn't really display any, any topology, any kind of berms or buffering. And I'm just curious if, if that is anticipated, or if, if the, the renderings are accurate and kind of showing more of a flat elevation. Because it is, it is a flat parcel currently. I, I just, but I, you know, you never know what, I mean, there could be kind of small things, and, you know, and, and places where maybe there aren't kind of buildups. Because when you're trying to mitigate sound, obviously, elevation matters, and vegetation matters, and, and all of those things to help kind of keep the sound into the, you know, to the site. But I, especially to the south. the south, I didn't really see anything that indicated any, any berms or, or things like that.
Yeah. So there, there are not any specifically berms proposed. What I'd like to share here, if I could, if we have a little bit of time, this is from, excuse me, the design review packet for this project that went to the design review board. And what, what it's showing here, I think is, is some information that I think addresses some of that. So what you have, here's a key. And so here's, this is a section. So this is a section here. And what you can see is, here's the park to the south of the parcel, and then the, the common property line. And you've got a 10-foot type one buffer. A type one buffer is a solid visual screen. And so that's along the entirety of the property line there. And then this other image here to the right illustrates the character of the, the landscaping along 188th. If I can just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, that's, that's great. So but you don't, you don't really anticipate any, any kind of elevation treatment that might be there.
No, so there is no burming, you know, but I think what's important to understand, so this doesn't show, that just shows the screening. This is the, the buffer on the easterly property line. And what this is showing is, obviously, you know, as, as you, as you probably realized, having reviewed some landscape plans on development projects, the landscape architects tend to like to make the vegetation look really large. So what we require here is, these diagrams are showing, the top one is showing the screening at installation. And then the lower feature is showing five years of growth in that buffer. So you can see that after five years, you're going to have a fairly substantial and dense landscape buffer there along the easterly property line. Similarly, this is for another location similar there. So you can see, again, you've got some really substantial landscaping in 10 years, and then again, at maturity.
Yeah, great. Okay, that answers my question. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor. Expanding a bit on the community outreach, I appreciate Councilmember Stewart's and Councilmember Carson talking about how can we ensure that the community that would be affected and impacted have, you know, adequate notification. And when you answered the question a few minutes ago, you seemed, I sensed that there was a deadline issue that I think that the public hearing is targeted for the 21st. And by law, we are 21-day notice. Was, can you just explain any concerns you have about if we were to expand to that list of people who attended the park opening or the park meeting? What concerns you have about getting that notification out and meeting your other schedules?
I don't have any concerns, to be honest. I would just need to work with our administrative staff to get them the additional addresses and names from, from the list of participants in that master plan process. And we can simply add it and expand the notice accordingly. So that, that would not add significant amount of time, in my opinion, to do that. But we can plan in advance. Now that I know that that's happening, I'll communicate that to them tomorrow. And we can plan accordingly to make sure that the notice goes out in a timely manner.
Perfect. And I appreciate that. And then, so in the event that there was something, whatever, some other questions that came up from our study session, what is the hard and fast deadline here for a public hearing? I mean, we're, we're looking to have it on the 21st, which is not a great timing, by the way, because of Thanksgiving holidays. But I get it. But if, if we were to miss that, what are the consequences of that?
Well, there's a couple. So as Mr. Haney indicated, you can hold the public hearing on the 21st and leave it open. So there's, there's no need to make a decision if you feel like additional information needs to be provided, or you have additional questions that have not been answered. So that's always an option. There's no obligation on the part of council to make a decision on the night of the hearing. That's one option. The other option is if you feel like there is insufficient information, you can certainly postpone the hearing. The consequences of that would be that this item would not be decided until after the first of the year, because there's, as I understand it, at least only one city council meeting in the month of December. So it would need to be extended into the, into January of 2024.
Got it. Yeah. And I forgot what Mr. Haney said. So thank you. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor.
Yes. I, I just wanted to remind everyone, we are, I know we've, you have had a lot of questions about this topic, and there is a big record. I agree with the mayor that it sounds like you would benefit from a study session. We don't want to inadvertently turn this time into a study session and being mindful that there are two more items on your agenda this evening. We can certainly come back. I do want to put a pin in some of the questions that you're asking that might be appropriate for a policy conversation another day. And that is the notice question. If we expand notice because we think it's a good idea, it actually raises questions about the adequacy of our notice. And that isn't something that we really, we don't, we believe our notice is adequate and it has been consistent with the code. I also want to pin for the council that notice and the types of things we do to include public feedback on projects that are permitted outright and that meet our code, slow projects down. And so remember that tension between trying to do the right thing and being aware of the staff who administer these permits and their expertise and the design review board and others that contribute to this project, and the contribution that what we do adds to timelines, to construction costs, to things that actually we invite people to participate in but may not actually be able to influence. So I just want to have you think on that and sit on it as we move forward, because we will be coming forward with process changes next year. And all of those things can contribute to us not meeting objectives with respect to housing, with respect to projects that you want to see that are consistent with our vision. So with that, I do want to say we've, and, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor, but happy to receive any additional questions that you have. You may communicate with us. We will put those into a issues matrix, address them for the study session that is already on the schedule. Sounds like you're interested in having that. And we will get you the environmental phase one information before that, so you have time to look at it. And other than that, I'll hand the microphone back to the mayor.
Thank you. I see Council, Councilmember Kritzler had a question as well?
No, I actually had point of order. I was just going to suggest that any questions, we didn't deep dive yet, so we could move that to the study sessions. So thank you, Director Helen.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, no, I appreciate Councilmember, or I'm sorry, I've done that mistake before. Director Helen, her trying to differentiate between what we're going to do and what we're not going to do. But what I think I just heard, and this is a timing issue, I think I just heard her say, no, we're not going to do the additional notification, which from my understanding earlier would need to start in the next day or two. So just a quick clarification, are we or are we not? And it's not a policy issue. This is an information.
We'll send, we'll send the notification as you've asked. I just want to let you know the, I just wanted to give you some context to when those questions are asked, how that fits into, you know, I've been asking my staff to think about what drives construction cost, what are barriers to us achieving the outcomes that we want to achieve under our codes, what slows people down, what makes things cost more money. And those, I was just using that as an example. You've asked us to do that, we will. And in the context of the code amendments next year, I just want you to think about this moment and think about how, how you want to frame that issue and where you want to put efforts with respect to policy choices regarding process next year.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify, this is the quasi judicial information. I appreciate what you're bringing up. Our policy issues, happy to postpone those to a policy issue time. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director Helen. And Mr. Harg, we will, if council has any other questions, they will get them to you promptly. And we will see you back at study session. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. The next item of business is a staff report for, the next, excuse me, the next staff report is the ratification of King County countywide planning policies. Carol Helen, Director of Planning Community Development, will be introducing this item as well.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor, council members. This is actually a PCD night. That's all you're going to hear about. So we have the next two study, staff reports. And this one is about ratification of the King County countywide planning policies. This summer, King County Council approved amendments to the King County countywide planning policies. The amendments are now subject to ratification by the cities. Staff introduced this item at your October 3 Committee of the Whole meeting and asked council members to identify questions or topics to address at tonight's staff report. Tonight, Jeff Churchill will provide the staff report to council on this topic in preparation for council taking action. And that needs to be via resolution. And we are hoping that that can be placed on the November 6 consent calendar. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Jeff.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor and council members. My purpose here tonight is twofold. One is to prepare you to ratify the 2023 amendments to the King County countywide planning policies, which I will call the CPPs, so that we are not here all night. And second, to address questions that you had at your October 3 Committee of the Whole meeting. In a word, the 2023 amendments to the CPPs are about housing. Specifically, they address new growth management act requirements to address housing needs across the income spectrum, in comprehensive plans and development regulations, and they establish an accountability and implementation framework toward that same end. The 2023 amendments to the CPPs go back a couple of years to when House Bill 1220 became law. At the time, the county was working on the last major update to the CPPs that you then ratified early in 2022. And recognizing at the time that it would take some time to work through the details of how to, how to make the CPPs compliant with House Bill 1220, the Growth Management Planning Council, or GMPC, created a work plan for the Affordable Housing Committee, which is the AHC, and which was a subset of the GMPC, to do this work. And the 2023 amendments are, are the product, are the result of that work plan. This, what this slide also illustrates is that in the process of updating the CPPs, what happens is that the Growth Management Planning Council makes a recommendation to the King County Council. The King County Council ratifies it on behalf of unincorporated King County and then sends it to the 39 cities for consideration. And that's where we are today. The first major component of the CPPs is establishing affordable housing needs for each city in King County and for unincorporated areas. Redmond's needs are shown on the slide, and it probably looks familiar to you because we have been using this table on a number of occasions over the last several months. And it has not changed. As has been pointed out before, the need for affordable housing to households earning up to 50% of area median income accounts for over half of the total need between 2019 and 2044 in Redmond. In 2023, 50% of area median income ranges from $51,000 for a single person household to $85,000 for a six person household, for example, for example. This slide compares the affordability profile of Redmond's housing stock today and the affordability profile that would meet the entire need between 2019 and 2044. What stands out, obviously, is how different these profiles are, which then impacts how we plan for housing in Redmond. And that's, that'll be on the next slide. So I want to, I do want to pause here, though, and remind the council that no city is obligated to deliver 100% of the affordable housing need. The need is greater than can be met with existing resources, even with the subsidies that exist now. Our obligation is to show through our housing element and through our development regulations that the housing types allowed in Redmond can be built in sufficient quantity with subsidy when needed to meet the need. See if we can advance the slide here. So this slide, which we have also shown before, shows the key changes that staff made in the preferred growth alternative for Redmond 2050 to meet the Growth Management Act requirements related to planning for housing across the income spectrum, as implemented in the CPPs. In summary, Redmond needs more capacity for low and mid-rise multifamily to meet the need for households earning up to 50% of area median income, because those are the housing types that can commonly be made affordable to those households. The second major component of the amendments to the CPPs is establishing an accountability and implementation framework. This slide describes what that looks like. The first part of that, and it also says where in the CPPs to find it, the policy numbers. The Affordable Housing Committee staff will review local housing elements for consistency with housing-related CPPs. For Redmond, that has been done. Redmond was the first city in the county to, to complete that process, which is a new process. And the city and the county kind of helped each other through that process and figured out what it was as we were going. The second component there is that the, excuse me, there will be annual reporting and monitoring that cities and King County will conduct to monitor progress toward meeting the affordable housing need. And finally, every five years, there will be a mid-cycle check-in to identify any shortfalls in plans that should be remedied to meet the Growth Management Act requirements. This slide is responsive to the question asked at the committee meeting about, you know, what will Redmond do to act on the letter received from the Affordable Housing Committee? And there's, there's quite a lot of detail on this slide. But there, there were five comments from the Affordable Housing Committee relative to Redmond's housing element. The first asked about income restricted housing in centers and near transit. Most of Redmond's housing will be in centers and near transit, and that's how the regional growth strategy is set up. Because Redmond operates one of the few mandatory inclusionary zoning programs in the county, a percentage of all new housing in centers and near transit is guaranteed to be affordable. Apart from that, Redmond's housing element will emphasize making use of surplus property for affordable housing, and some of that is in our centers. The Affordable Housing Committee asked about closing the racial gap in homeownership. There are a number of strategies that the city can employ. Broadening the ability to build middle housing is one of them, to provide more opportunities for attainable ownership housing. Funding existing programs for debt payment assistance is another. Evaluating models that Redmond does not employ today, such as community land trusts, is another. Surplus property, again, is another tool that can be used not only to create lower income household, housing in centers, but also to close the racial gap in homeownership. But finally, tying all of those together is consulting with those that are affected by the racial gap in homeownership as we determine which strategies to employ. The AHC asked Redmond to provide more information and sources, more information about the sources and local examples of racially exclusive and discriminatory practices in Redmond related to housing. Those have already been added to the draft that you reviewed in September, so that is there. AHC asked Redmond to address the ability of households earning up to 50% of area median income to locate in lower density areas of the city. So kind of both centers was the first comment, and then the lower density areas of the city is the fourth comment. So taken together, it's kind of everywhere in Redmond. Redmond's, excuse me, inclusionary zoning program supports this. It exists not only in the centers, it also exists outside the centers. Middle housing is another tool that can produce some housing that's affordable at this income level, depending on the middle housing type that it is. There is also a new tool in the housing element to authorize density bonuses on land owned by religious organizations. This is an authority that's set up in state law that's optional for cities to adopt. And we have not, we have not adopted to date, but it's in the plan to adopt as part of Redmond 2050. And finally, the AHC asked Redmond to address safe and healthy housing. Redmond's housing stock is largely safe and co-compliant. Older housing in Redmond has tended to be redeveloped rather than to sit in disrepair. And still, the housing element And still, the housing element will focus on developing needed infrastructure concurrent with new housing and also putting housing in areas with high access to opportunity and amenities. And certainly, middle housing enabling that more broadly is one way to do that. Others, a question at the committee about if there were surprises in the Affordable Housing Committee's letter or more broadly, in the process of developing the 2023 amendments to the CPPs. Given that the work plan was advertised well in advance and that Director Helen and others were involved in shaping the final result, I think the answer to that is no big surprises with these. So I'll bring us then to the schedule. Tonight's staff report, again, is meant to prepare you to take action to ratify the CPPs on November 6, which would that conclude the process for the city. And thank you very much for your time tonight. I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions this evening? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for that presentation. I have a quick question on the slide where you had the picture of the need for housing. And I was wondering if the size of the pie matters?
The sizes of the pie on the slide are equal. The number of housing units in both pies are not equal.
Okay.
The one, the existing housing stock is roughly 31,000 units. The 2019 to 2044 growth target is 20,000, as a sense of scale.
Cool, thank you.
Council President Forsyth.
Thank you. I was looking at the affordability needs affects preferred alternative, the map, for the upzoning. And when we looked at this a while back, it didn't quite have all of the areas that would be impacted by the upzone that is currently in 1220. So are we to assume that it's every area will be upzoned as per 1220? Or are we only focusing on what's on this map?
We will consolidate, so this is the second bullet point, consolidating all the multifamily to approximate today's R30 zone. It will be all of the multifamily zones. And I remember your comment that said those were not all shown on the map, but it will be all of them.
Okay. And then as far as the, it was my understanding through reading 1220 that basically everything gets kind of bumped up to the next level. Is that accurate? Even the single-family zones get kind of pushed into the next level up?
So my recollection of 1220 is that it does, it does not specify kind of the how. 1110, the middle housing bill from 2023, does, does set minimum requirements for residential zone in terms of what must be allowed related to middle housing. And so we will need to comply with that as well.
Okay. And that's only on new build, not necessarily current inventory?
Right. But, but for example, the zoning regulations would change so that a lot that has a single-family home on it today would be eligible to have multiple units in the future.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Council Vice President.
Thank you very much for the information on how you've integrated the recommendations into the work that we're doing on our housing element. A little bit of a feedback issue here, hopefully. Okay. Keep going unless it's too difficult for people to hear. One question that I had was on the safe and healthy housing policy. I was a little bit unclear from, from what you just described and what you put on there whether we actually are going to be drafting a safe and healthy housing policy to be included in there or if it's more that we're going to strive towards policies that promote safe and healthy housing because the recommendations seem to indicate that we should have a holistic policy around that.
Yeah. The AHC asked, well, recommended that we address it specifically. So we'll, so I think our job now is to go back and look at the specific CPPs and then draft one if we think is needed to be compliant with the CPPs. I think the other option would be to point back to where it's addressed in existing policies if, if that was just not communicated clearly in the existing, in the draft as, as you have seen it.
Okay, thank you. And I think they did mention that there are strategies that other, that jurisdictions could use or maybe examples from other places that have drafted those. So it would be interesting to me to, to be able to see, you know, how others have approached it to make sure that we do have some clarity on, on how we approach that issue in terms of both, kind of the quality of housing that we're creating in addition to the, the quantity. So appreciate that. And then one question that I had, there was the, at the end of the letter that they sent us, the discussion around how it aligns with the CPP housing chapter. And one of the pieces was, was kind of questions around how the Housing Action Plan, actions are connected to our housing element policies. Can you speak to that and any planned actions that we have responding to that feedback?
Sure. So that's an interesting, that's a great question. So during the review process, one thing that the staff asked us for was just a copy of the Housing Action Plan as a way of fulfilling the requirement that we show them implementation details. And they said, great, you have a Housing Action Plan, please send it. And so we did, and they said, great. That, that was part of the learning process. So by the time we got to the end of the review process, the county had revised or made it the standard that actually they will seek implementation details, again, in Redmond's case, after plans get adopted, to give jurisdictions the opportunity to go through their entire planning process and then send them updated implementation deals after, implementation details after the plans are adopted. So that's the sequence of events for the review process. I think to, to the rest of your question, the Housing Action Plan really was a foundation for building this housing element, one, kind of one of the pillars, because it identified needs and also identified priorities. And so I'm hoping that you recognize a lot of the priorities from the Housing Action Plan in the housing element. And they can feed off each other. At some point, we will finish kind of what's in the Housing Action Plan, and we may go back and do another strategic plan related to housing and which will update the next plan element and so on.
That's very helpful. And I do see the Housing Action Plan reflected in a lot of the housing elements, so appreciate that. I, yeah, I guess I was trying to understand what it is that they were asking us to do as the follow-up action on that. So that's helpful to understand a little more of the process. Thank you. And I will just say, as a final comment on this, I'm, I'm happy to ratify these CPPs as soon as, as the council is interested. And just want to say that I appreciate King County taking the action to do the review and to send us these detailed recommendations so that we can strengthen our housing element. And I'm glad that Redmond could go first and I think be a model for being open to getting this feedback as well as being able to showcase how robust our plans are.
Thanks. Council President Forsyth.
Yeah, just wanted to kind of echo what Council Vice President Kurtser said. I'm looking forward to passing these. I forgot to mention earlier, I'm really excited about that density bonus on, for housing on land owned and controlled by religious organizations. This is something that I've heard about from organizations that they would be interested in doing so. So I'm excited to, to move forward on that.
Any other comments or questions for this evening? All right. Seeing none, thank you, thank you, Jeff. Oh, did I, I didn't miss anyone? Okay. And we'll see this on November 6 in consent. Thank you. And last, for our staff reports, we have, let me find it again, is on the Redmond 2050 Supplemental Draft Environmental Impact Statement, or Draft EIS. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will be introducing this item. Director Helen.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. This is the Redmond 2050 Supplemental Draft Environmental Impact Statement update. On September 20, the staff published a supplemental draft EIS for Redmond 2050. Among other things, the supplemental draft EIS responds to public impact input that we received on the draft EIS, accounts for recent housing legislation, such as the ones that were just described by Mr. Churchill, and most importantly, evaluates a preferred alternative. Staff introduced this item at your October 3 Committee of the Whole meeting and asked council members to identify questions or topics to address in tonight's staff report. Responses to those topics have been provided in writing in your packet. Becky Frye will provide a staff report to council on this item. And what I wanted to do just contextually, because I bet that many of the council members who are sitting on the dais now have not experienced the review of an environmental impact statement. And just contextually, the council isn't being asked to take any action. Environmental impact statements are prepared by the environmental coordinators, and that responsibility is provided in code to Erin Burt, the Public Works Director, and to myself. And what we are asking or providing this evening is an opportunity for you to receive information about the findings that are included in the supplemental draft under the State Environmental Policy Act. This is a disclosure document so that you are able to evaluate the consequences of a policy decisions and choices that you may make. And then we really would like you to consider the findings that are contained in the supplemental draft EIS as you make decisions about policy and code updates as part of the Redmond 2050 policy decisions you'll be making and code decisions you'll be making over the next year. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Becky.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I will start out this evening just with a reminder of where we are in the environmental review process. We are several years in, and we are inching up on the final stages of the environmental review for Redmond 2050. This was an integrated plan process. So we fully started the scoping in 2020. We issued the Draft Environmental Impact Statement last year. We added on this supplemental draft. And our hope is to get a final EIS spout by the end of this year so that we can proceed into the adoption phases. As a reminder, the purpose of this supplemental draft, as Director Helen just mentioned, really was to talk about that preferred alternative, analyze what that growth impacts would be, what we would have to do to change our infrastructure, our staffing, all of those things to accommodate that growth. But we've also folded into this a lot of information about the policy and regulatory updates, including additional information on the Overlake Planned Action and the new infill exemptions that we're proposing. And we're happy to share that information this evening. So just a reminder, one of the things that the preferred alternative does is it actually does identify where growth will go throughout our community. We studied a number of different center possibilities and distributions of growth in the Draft Environmental Impact Statement. The Preferred Growth Alternative incorporated a lot of that feedback and elements from each of the different alternatives. What you see before you tonight is a summary of what we're moving forward with the preferred alternative. All of the alternatives did really heavily focus on growth in Overlake for a number of reasons. One is the environmental impacts of growth in Overlake was less than elsewhere. But we did respond to the focus from a regional planning perspective and community comments on growth in our other centers as well. I do want to point out that when it says elsewhere here, please keep in mind that that is a lot of our corridors as well. So Willow's Road Corridor, our southeast Redmond areas with our regional retail, Avondale, et cetera. So all of those things, not necessarily just scattered throughout the community. They are in focused areas in the maps, and the next couple of slides will highlight that. So as you can see here, the alternative one was the no action. That's under our current zoning and land use policies. And again, as a reminder, alternative two was a continuation of a focus on our centers that has been Redmond's policy for the last couple of decades. Alternative three was developed based off of community feedback on a desire to connect the centers more and utilize our corridors. And as you can see, the preferred alternative is very similar to what we did study, and it's very close in a distribution pattern to our centers and corridors model. In 2050, what does this look like? This is taking all of the growth and showing where that is occurring. And you'll see that the actual distribution of growth throughout our community will be similar to what we see today. So we haven't created new areas of intensity of growth. So the Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement includes a number of evaluation points. This slide is just some examples. You can see on the report card sliders, all the environmental categories that were reviewed. Just as a reminder, the further to the right, the more accommodations you would have to make. So the more infrastructure investments or the more staffing for police and fire, that type of thing. The further to the left, the easier it is to accommodate, or there's no impacts at all. Most of the times when you'll see something that has a moderate or significant impact, the existing code will actually be a part of the mitigation for that impact or other identified upgrades. There's a couple of areas that we did want to point out. There's a couple of different things that we're shifting. One is transportation mitigation approaches. This is changing throughout the state. In our last update, our transportation mitigation was gearing more towards walking and biking and multimodal transportation planning. That has been doubled down and expanded even further. So we're not necessarily considering a intersection level of service F as a critical failure to expand the lanes in that intersection anymore. So we're moving away from vehicle-based metrics and mitigation patterns to multimodal patterns and looking at all of the options to get people around our community. So just want to point that out. It is in line with recent regional planning policies and some legislative changes that have made it very clear that communities are encouraged to do so. The other thing, just to point out, there are some future sewer needs for downtown. Because downtown is flat, because we have to get materials from one part of downtown to the other, there's just some challenges there. Also, how we integrate into the regional system and the connectivity between city and county pipes. There are some changes we just wanted to point out in here. This is a max growth at buildout. So additional research is going to have to determine when we would need upgrades, how fast, additional CIP programs would have to identify, what would go first in funding mechanisms on those lines. But this is something that we did want to point out as a finding of the growth in downtown. And we're really excited to share that we will have a SEPA infill exemption or a SEPA planned action in the entire city under this new proposal. So we have our Overlake Planned Action, and that will continue moving forward. We have two infill exemptions that are the intermediate step that they cover housing and mixed-use and some small commercial. And they will be in downtown and Marymore. The mitigation will be a little bit different, in part because of what you just saw. The mitigation for downtown and pipes will be a little bit different than for Marymore. So they'll be under different infill exemption programs and be tracked separately. And then everywhere else in the city, we'll be using a brand-new legislative opportunity that came about earlier this year for a citywide infill exemption for housing alone. And so when fully adopted, all housing that is consistent with the comprehensive plan will be covered by a SEPA exemption or a planned action. If it is not covered by what we've studied, some additional study would be required at that time. So the next steps, our public comment period ends this Friday. We have a public hearing tomorrow evening here in council chambers. We have had one written comment submitted to date. But we have had several meetings, and I do expect some comments to come in, including we met last Friday with the state DOT staff as well as some property owners, just looking to see what does that preferred alternative mean to their parcel. We will continue to move forward and respond to all of those comments, any additional information that's needed to finalize the EIS. And again, our goal is to get that out by the end of the year. And that will allow us to proceed with formal action on the actual elements, code updates, and functional plan updates. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Becky. Are there any questions this evening? Council President Forsyth.
Thank you. On the traditional funding mechanism for sewer buildout, who, who traditionally is responsible for that? Like what fund is it? Fully city, is it a combination of city builder, developer?
It could be a number of different things. And our public work staff is looking at if this is something that would be city-built or if it'd be something that would, the city would build and then the developers would help pay back or typical. What we saw in Marymore. What we saw in Marymore might be something that we end up doing with downtown as well, for instance. But that is a decision that will be made in the future. Additional study is needed by Public Works to actually make those determinations and they would come with you, come to you at that time with specific proposals for funding sources.
Okay. What has been done in the past traditionally?
I know about Marymore.
Yep. I can help a little bit. So traditionally, our utility funding is funded through the special funds that we have for utility infrastructure, plus we also actually get developer-related infrastructure improvements. So some of those improvements we do when developers come in and create a project, for instance, along their frontages, they oftentimes increase the size of the capacity of the pipes along the frontage of their developments if there's a nexus between the increase that they're making. We also have, like in Marymore Village, I believe they did an LID in that area and then essentially created connection charges that related to the payback of the utility infrastructure that was created in that area by developers who then used the, for instance, the new lift station that was constructed there and other capacity that was created. There are a variety of different ways we can do it. We'll be looking for revenue sources to accommodate those funding improvements. And more information, as Becky was talking about, with respect to modeling when the demand is going to be created for these infrastructure needs. So that will help us plan into the future. We've also done some things where we've pre-funded development capacity to address development. So for instance, another example is the stormwater facility that was constructed in Overlake that then developers are allowed to utilize as part of their projects. And that was part of our actual incentive plan for them to essentially pay into that as a portion of their incentives that they received in order to construct their buildings. So there's a variety of different models. We have to get better information about timing and then we can create those essentially financial avenues for us to pay for the infrastructure that's needed.
Okay, great. Yeah, the, this map in particular has been one of the great concern for me for looking forward. So I'm just, I'm really interested to learn what those funding mechanisms are, so I appreciate that. And then thank you for the information on the sewer program for, this is kind of a tangent here, for homeowners. That was submitted in some of their, I think it might have been last week's materials, but I just wanted to say thank you to staff for that information about the ability for homeowners to actually use that program and tap into sewer earlier and not bear the burden of all that cost at once. And then just the next, the last question I have is, why is the public hearing not during a council meeting? I think this is the first time that we've, we've seen that happen.
So just noting, the actual, the EIS is outside the purview of the city council. It's a disclosure document. It's governed by the Redmond Municipal Code. The, the environmental coordinators are responsible for preparation and oversight of the EIS. We hired Burke and others were contributors to that document. And so the public hearing is one that's put on by the environmental coordinators and that information is assembled and we respond to those comments in the final, the final EIS that will be prepared by the end of the year.
Okay. So we will still hear and see all of those comments?
Yes. Comments received, either written comments or verbal testimony that we receive will have answers that get documented and prepared and assembled as part of the final.
Okay. And will that meeting be broadcast or recorded so that we can go back and watch it?
No, it won't be. The, the information will be actually transcribed though.
Okay. Is there, is there no possibility to, to stream that meeting?
We can't do it live based on staffing resources, but we can record it.
I would, I would be interested in watching a recording, but I leave that to you all to figure.
Okay. We can use the recording that we produce on Teams and make that available.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Thank you for this presentation. Appreciated looking through the scorecard and hearing a little bit how, when we, I look at the scorecard and then some of the different factors that we're considering in terms of how we have to plan, given the places where we see for the preferred alternative, there's more significant or moderate to significant impacts. For example, the sewer piece, or you mentioned about stormwater facilities. Curious on some of the other ones, whether we also are, you know, kind of forward-looking on plans like, for example, I noticed we're on the moderate to significant side and plants and animal impacts and, and just how we, we think about using that information. I imagine for things like police, fires, schools, parks, those are really contained within the elements. But on, on some of those, those top environmental impacts, curious if you have more thoughts to share on those.
So we use the feedback from this review process to go into our critical areas updates. So we evaluate all of those things and see if there's a need for any code updates. So all of this information, the staff that's working on those updates has been contributing to this document, so they're aware of the mitigation outlined in it. So the, the mitigation steps that are recommended for consideration are actually outlined in the supplemental draft and staff will be moving forward with mitigation.
Great. Thanks.
Other questions? I don't see any others. Thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. And that, that is, those are all of our staff reports for this evening. Our next item of business is ombuds report for September, Councilmember Carson, and for October, Councilmember Khan. So Councilmember Carson, do you have anything to wrap up?
I think I wrapped it all up last time.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Khan.
For this month, since my last report, we've had three emails to the council@redmond.gov email. The first, I believe regarding the concern of an individual and their employment. Another one regarding a suggestion for, I want to say weapons trainings. And then the last one regarding sidewalk obstruction due to scooters and, I guess, sidewalk maintenance issues. And that's all we have for October.
Thank you so much. Are there any other ombuds items? Seeing none, are there any committee reports? Let's start with Councilmember Carson.
I was hoping you would call on someone else. I gotta find my document.
I can, if you want me to go on.
That'd be great.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
I attended two regional committees. One was the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association. We discussed SCA and AWC's state legislative priorities. And it does seem like they're generally aligning with a lot of the ones that we discussed the other week in our council, so we'll, we'll have some good alignment there. And I did actually ask in the, when AWC was, was presenting, whether they will be supporting the extended producer responsibility legislation again, and they, they do have that written into their platform again this year. So that'll be great to have alignment and supporting that, although it was noted as part of that discussion that it's likely to come back as, as multiple, be broken up into multiple bills. So that'll be interesting to track, since I know that's something of interest to our council. And then there was a, a discussion about the cultural access sales tax, which King County is, is considering. And, and I think that that's going to be a really interesting one to be able to support cultural access organizations. And it was interesting to be able to hear from, from jurisdictions about their, their thoughts on that. And then we also discussed the, the King County flood, district, flood control district budget and that currently there are some concerns because that expenditures are exceeding revenues and that the cash fund balance by 2025 is expected to be $0. There was a discussion about the need of some urgent next actions to be taken so that that district can continue to have dollars, since it's provided funding to a lot of flood mitigating projects, also provides dollars to a variety of salmon recovery projects that also are in floodplain areas. So anyway, there was a lot of, of interest and discussion around how it got to this point, since there was a, quite a bit of surplus previously. And then I think they had been drawing down and spent on a lot of different projects. So a lot of really interesting discussion on that, that I just thought I would bring to everyone's attention, since that was probably the most key, key discussion and one for us to pay attention to, they may be looking at coming back to, to get some sort of additional funding for that countywide. Then I also attended the King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting. We discussed they're, they're really narrowing in on their strategic plan update that has a really big focus on diversity, equity, inclusion and justice throughout that, and I think is very interesting. And then are beginning the process around rate renewals. I'm going to be joining with the Sound Cities Association representatives to that in talking with the executive director of KCD to be able to kind of consult on how cities might be involved in that rate-setting process, which will become, happening in this upcoming year. And then, and then finally, there was a really interesting presentation around their work on wildfire prevention programs and work with homeowners and landowners on doing kind of cost-share projects with them to support practices that will help to prepare for and minimize the risk of wildfire damage to their homes. So definitely something that I hope that we continue in Redmond to be able to connect our residents to. We've got a lot of great wealth of knowledge there and especially for those who, who are near areas that are prone to, to fire, to be prepared. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. I found it. So I went to the monthly, well, every other month, we meet in person. So we kind of do business during our virtual ones. But this is the Emergency Management Advisory Committee that I sit on as a representative of Sound Cities Association. We met in Renton at the emergency management facility for King County last Wednesday. And I went, I went with Lisa Figaroa, our emergency manager. And we were able, in our caucus meeting before the, the big, the big meeting, we met our new zone coordinators. And our, our coordinator is Sunita Hall, and so we met her. She's, she'd already met Lisa, not surprisingly. And I think that maybe the chief has already met our zone coordinator as well, or will, will soon meet her. So we had both zone, zone coordinators for the, kind of the east side and south King County, both resigned at the same time. So we have two new ones in the two zones on the east side of, of Seattle. So the, we, we dispensed with, we, we just did the minutes. And then what was interesting is we, we talked about winter weather playbooks and they're, they're revising, or they have revised the winter weather playbook. And also they're, I think they're working on for next, for next, next summer, the, the heat and playbooks for, for those scenarios, which are all available through King County OEM. If, if anybody wants to, to get them and read them, I can facilitate that. We then did a tabletop exercise, also known as a TTX. And this is where you are given a scenario and it's, it's kind of role-playing, but it's also information gathering and things like that. And then you, at, at some point, you'll, so they, they, they want, they elicit responses. In this case, this was a terrorist situation. And there were three different breakouts where there were elected officials, emergency managers and the public. And so there were, there were plenty of elected officials in the room, so I went and sat at the public table. And it was, it was interesting because they do these, these injections of new facts. So, so, so you're, you're given questions that you, you answer for the first, you know, with the first set of facts, and then the injection of new information comes in and then you have to respond to that. And, and so it was, it was a very interesting, sometimes these go on for multiple days, but obviously we only had about an hour to do this. So it's fairly simplistic, but it was, it was really interesting, some of the things that people came up with that, you know, we as elected officials need to think about, both from the, from the emergency management perspective toward the elected officials, but also obviously the, the needs of the public to get, have accurate information and things like that. So it was, it was really interesting and we hadn't, we hadn't done one of these before. And I think this is, my understanding is this is how we do, there's, not the, not the great shakeout, but the other one, there's another tabletop exercise that I think goes for two days and.
Cascadia Rising.
Cascadia Rising. Thank you. And it's very intricate and there are more than just three kind of pots of people to, you have specific jobs and you have to do specific things over the course of the event. So anyway, it was, it's, it's, it's a very simple, simple one, but it was very instructive and I, I, we didn't, we didn't record it, but I think it, it's one of those things that would be, I think, helpful for other elected officials to have seen and understand kind of the, what we could expect if we had a, a real-life exercise, or not exercise, a real-life event like that. So anyway, and then I think that was it and we adjourned and got back to Redmond safely.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Council Vice President?
I forgot one committee that I went to. So I also went to the Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting this last week and the, we discussed, we had a presentation from the Pugus Sound Regional Council staff about their updates to the regional safety plan. And they actually talked about the safe streets for all, or safer streets for all action plan as part of that and the work that they're doing with cities like ours. So it was great to be able to share a little bit about our collaboration on that and to be able to hear a little bit more about what they're thinking across the region in terms of, of just thinking about street safety and, and some of the same goals that we're really looking at in our city. And I think it'll be very interesting because they are kind of gathering some different pieces of data to look at how we might be able to use that data in our own city as, as they proceed on that as well. And then we also just discussed ETP's state legislative agenda. So I think, you know, I think overall people were very supportive of the ideas that, that we brought to the table and I think it'll be a useful piece. People were also excited to hear that the work that we did to be able to advocate, to be able to have impact fees used for off-road bike paths was something that we achieved because it was, I had put it on the agenda for ETP last year and we were reviewing last year as to see if we should strike anything, you know, change anything. And one of the, the people who were leading it said, should we leave this one on? And I said, no, we did it. So everyone was very excited about that, since not everyone had been included, but everyone was glad to have achieved it together. So yay Redmond.
Great. Thank you so much for sharing that. Any other committee reports? I don't have a committee report, but I just wanted to share that I was able to go to the Eastlake Sumamish Trail opening. It's a trail that's been in the works for about 26 years and it was really an amazing experience and really happy for the celebration. And now you can go from the trail, right now it starts around Whole Foods in Redmond and you can go all the way to Isiqua without a break. And in the coming year, you'll be able to go the other direction as well as we complete the missing link from the Eastlake Sumamish Trail to the Redmond Central Connector. So pretty excited about that next step as well. But it was a really fun celebration and King County, King County did an amazing job of kicking it off. So it was, it was very fun and always love to have a trail opening. With that, I don't see any other committee reports. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We do not have an executive session. And that concludes the business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all.